Call the meeting door, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, welcome to the October 13th session of Brookings City Council. Ask City Clerk to record council attendance.
Mayor and council members, as we are all not in the same location, please respond with "present" when I call your name. Bacon?
Present.
Brink?
Present.
Collins?
Present.
Corbett?
Present.
Neimeyer?
Present.
Tilton Byrne?
Present.
Wendell?
Present.
Okay, thank you. First item, council is the consent agenda, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment consent agenda? Seeing none, council comments or questions on the consent agenda? Please call a roll.
Corbett?
Aye.
Neimeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda is approved. Now we're under open forums and presentation reports, I'd turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. Within our organization, we utilize our core values, mission, statement, to hire the best applicants to serve our Brookings community. Department heads now have an opportunity to proudly introduce members of our management team to council in our community through this forum. Dave, our police chief is here to introduce our newest sergeant. Dave, you come forward with Johnny, introduce him, and then I'll take, move forward and introduce our newest IT manager, but we'll turn it over to Dave, the police chief first.
Thank you, city manager, mayor, council. We're here again to introduce another fabulous member of our department. This is Sergeant Jonathan Weinrich. He's been with our department for about eight years, little over eight years. He has served on our special response team. Serves as a field training officer. Has also participated in a lot of the bicycling programs that we put on at the PD as a bike patrol officer, as well as conducting the safety bike events for our children. So John is a philanthropist from back in his college days. He has always given, giving of himself. He has a lot of knowledge and expertise that I have drawn on already in the past and will continue to do so in his new role. And so it's my honor to introduce to you tonight Sergeant Jonathan Weinrich.
In case you're wondering, I'm not going to make the comment your wife made, it you're pinning. I won't share that, but if anybody wants to know, I'd love to share it with you, but thank you for your service and welcome aboard as a sergeant.
Thank you.
Thanks Johnny, Dave. Don, if you want to come forward. Don Goff is our new IT manager. Don comes to us from the city of Moline, Illinois, where he was the IT manager there most recently and had worked there with that municipality for 13 years. Once again, the city and community of Brookings is really attracting some of the finest to our community. So we're excited to have Don as part of our crew. Don is responsible for the IT department, is under the HR department. Susan couldn't be here today, but it is a division under the HR department. And Don, along with Quakeu, will be responsible for ensuring the safety and wellbeing of our IT services. You know, now more than ever, as we're all virtually on the internet, it's imperative that we protect our systems. And most people don't even think about how important our IT systems are for our first responders, dispatch, all those services that we need on a day-to-day basis. So very excited to have Don on board. Don, if you would just take maybe a quick second or two, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yes, as Paul said, I'm from Illinois. I do have quite an extensive background in government, I've been doing it for 13, 14 years. And I like to bring my knowledge and expertise to the city of Brookings. I'm glad to be here, thank you.
Welcome.
One last thing, I would like to publicly thank Quakeu. Quakeu has been, is our IT specialist, and he's been stepping up, being a one-person show over the last four months, taking care of 142 employees in our organization all by himself. And lives and breathes our mission of providing professional services and solutions to our organization. So thank you, Quakeu.
Thank you, Quakeu. Okay, at this time, I'd like to have Mark Sternhagen, publicity chair for the committee for people who have disabilities, to join me. Evening, Mark. See you again. Mark has been an important part of that committee for, I don't know, how many years? Yeah, forever. All right, so, whereas the National Disability Employment Awareness Month is commemorating its 75th anniversary of educating about disability employment issues and celebrating the many and varied contributions of workers with disabilities. And whereas the National Disability Employment Awareness Month is led by the U.S. Department of Labor's Office of Disability Employment Policy, but its true spirit lies in many observations held at the grassroots level across the nation every year. And whereas employers of all sizes and in all industries are encouraged to participate in National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Whereas workplace welcoming of the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy. Now therefore, I, Keith Corbett, Mayor of the city of Brookings, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. And I call upon employers, schools, and community organizations to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities and to advance its important message that people with disabilities are equal to the task throughout the year. Mark, I know, see, we do fist bump, what we used to do, yeah, this we did. Do you want to say anything?
Of course.
Yeah, well, I figured that, but still, I'd offer.
Well, I'm here tonight, and Brianna was supposed to be here, but she's kind of under the weather. So I'm filling in for her and for myself. She did have a letter that she sent me, unfortunately, she sent it after I was already here. So it's on my phone, I am not going to attempt to read it because I won't make you suffer through that. But we really want, the committee wants to thank you, the city of Brookings and Keith, for declaring this month. It really is an important thing and possibly more important now than ever. Because very often, you know, the disabled workers are an important part of the community and the success of this country and this community. But also, very often, the disabled workers are some of the first to be let go when there's tough economic times and the last to be rehired. And it's just kind of how it is. So I think it's more important now than ever. And certainly from my own perspective, looking back 75 years, I can't imagine how horrible it was to be disabled looking for a job back then. I know what it was like 45 years ago when I first started looking for employment. And I had to be way overqualified to just be able to get the job. And that's gotten a lot better, but we've got a long ways to go. Even in the last few years, I have personally seen and been part of problems associated with being disabled and then being employed. But it's very important. I also want to say for this committee that we're working hard for the community. And we've got a couple of awards that we're going to be presenting in the near future. The Able Award that everybody's familiar with, it has to do with access in the community. We also have added in the Empower Award, which is to businesses that have created an active disability employment program and are actively working to employ the disabled. So thank you very much. Enjoy the cookies. For anybody, there's some more back in the lobby back there. Please take one with you and think about the disabled when you're doing that. Look at it not from my perspective. I don't want you to feel sympathy for me, I want you to feel empathy. And realize it could have been any of you sitting here. And I also will say from a very, very personal note, October 24th is World Polio Day. And that means a lot to me. Vaccinate your children. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now I'd call upon the city attorney to speak to the settlement agreement update.
Thank you, Mayor. At this point, I think the report I am going to give is going to be pretty brief because we've completed, really, all of the steps of the settlement agreement with the county with respect to the expansion of the county detention center. And the primary objective of the settlement agreement was to establish some understandings with the county with respect to the withdrawal of the appeal to the Supreme Court. The appeal has been withdrawn. Other points of consideration in the settlement agreement include the issuance of the building permit, and of course, that building permit has been issued in mid-September, and the construction project is moving forward. In addition, a stipulation with respect to the impact of this decision has been submitted to the circuit court that issued the initial decision. We have not received a response at this point on that point. The county has agreed to construct the building, and we fully expect it will be constructed in conformity with the plans and proposals that have been previously submitted to the city. And I guess the final point would be that the parties have worked cooperatively ever since the decision was made to enter into the settlement agreement to withdraw the appeal. There's been absolutely no friction or discord in terms of implementing this settlement agreement. So we're real pleased with the cooperative spirit of performance of this settlement agreement. So that would be the extent of my report at this time. I'm open for questions if anyone has any.
Councilman Wendell?
I don't necessarily have a question, I just had a note to share. I do appreciate you bringing the settlement agreement back. For those of you that have been following along, you might recall that the council was asked to take action and did approve this agreement without it being completed. And just a number of days later, then the county commission had to come to the same conclusion, but they had an agreement before them and it was attached to their public agenda. I thought it was important because this has been, I think, a topic of interest in our community for a number of months. The very least, we circle back and provide the settlement agreement on a public agenda so that folks who had been following city council meetings could put eyes on what the finalized agreement looked like and what that language included. Of course, it was referred to in our conversation, but I thought it was important that this document was noted on an agenda and that we revisit now that the agreement was completed by both the county commission and the city council. So I appreciate you bringing it forward, and for those in the community that have been following this issue, you'll note that the settlement agreement is attached to this evening's agenda. So you are able to read the agreement that both parties reached.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, open public forum, anyone care to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda for tonight? You know the routines, I won't tell you what to do.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor, city council. Our government affairs chair is a bit under the weather, but I'm Hattie Seaton, and I'm happy to be here on behalf of our South Dakota State University Students Association. Tonight I have the following updates. There was no SA senate meeting last night in recognition of Native American Day. However, a few pieces of legislation have passed through the senate since we last met with you. Two bylaws amendment passed, the first mandating public access of recordings of our senate meetings, and the second instituting authority policy for our Students Association senators. Two resolutions passed as well. In the first, we had a recognition of October as LGBTQ+ History Month, and the second is in support of adding breaks in the spring academic calendar. In addition to our legislation, our executive team has been working on strategic goal planning, and we'll present that to the senate in our next meeting. In greater university news, President Dunn delivered his State of the University address today. Some updates included that South Dakota State University received accreditation by the Higher Learning Commission with a strong grading last February. We set an all-time high of 81% in our retention rate of students going from their freshman to sophomore year. As well as we finished the PAC 2 and are rebuilding Harding Hall, as well as looking at funding with new buildings on campus. SDSU is also holding two free flu shot clinics this semester. Our first one took place last week, and the second will take place next week on October 22nd from an 11 o'clock to 5 o'clock PM for our students. As well as the South Dakota Board of Regents met last week. And during their meeting, their primary issue was related to decisions regarding the spring break. And that spring semester academic calendar will remain the same. That is all I have for you for now. Thank you for your time, unless you have any questions.
Any questions? Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
You don't know, Hattie was the state local chair last year, so we saw her a lot.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Anyone else care to speak in open forum?
Hello again, Bradley Walker, resident of Brookings. So at the last council meeting, I suggested amending the current COVID ordinance to allow businesses to operate at 100% capacity since masks are now required indoors. I left and watched the end of the meeting at home and noticed Member Collins brought up the subject again. There was dialogue between the members saying they were open to discussing it. Have there been any discussions regarding this matter since, in the three-week period?
Want to talk to that one?
Sure, next week, actually, there's going to be a special work session where that matter will be discussed. Council will have the opportunity to discuss the occupancy, whether or not they want to reduce it, increase it, or change any other things with the ordinance. So it'd be a great opportunity to come, listen in to that discussion.
So why, might I ask, why is it taking three weeks to just have, to begin a discussion on this? I mean, don't you guys have dialogue between each other?
That would be more or less a question amongst council, council as a whole. I'm sure they talk to each other regularly, but as a board, they only meet once every few weeks.
As I stated before, the thresholds that you have set for moving to the next stage of recovery are unobtainable. Why you are using guidelines from the World Health Organization is puzzling to me. Same World Health Organization has said you need to lock down society to prevent the spread. Now you have, may have noticed, they have completely reversed course and said lockdowns are dangerous and counterproductive and should be used only as a last resort. Well, it's too late for that, the damage has already been done. And now the CDC has released a study showing 85% of the COVID cases testing positive in July were people who often or always wore masks. 3.9% of the cases never wore masks. This study is posted in the comment section of one of your Facebook page posts, the one about being a good mascot, if you're interested. So once again, I am urging someone to introduce an amendment to the current ordinance to allow businesses to return to 100% operating capacity. If masks work, we shouldn't need any restrictions. And if they don't work, as evidence presented to you multiple times suggests, then remove the mask mandate and stop dividing our community. I thought we were being proactive on this, taking no action week after week is making things worse for the business community here in Brookings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, close the public forum at this time. Contracts and change orders, call in the assistant city manager to speak to Resolution 20-79.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. The city contracts on an annual basis for assistance with snow removal, primarily in residential areas. The city receives slightly improved response to the bid request from the previous season with comparable pricing. Staff requests the city council approve all bids received, and contracted assistance will be deployed in order of greatest value to the city. Staff does recommend approval of the resolution and will stand for any questions.
This time, entertain a motion to approve Resolution 20-79.
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, close the public comment. Council, comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Neimeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye. Resolution 20-79 is approved. Long as you're up here, you want to continue?
The city bids for rolled salt collaboratively with Brookings County on an annual basis to take advantage of cost savings. Rolled salt pricing is largely determined by mining and transportation costs. Johnson Feed provided the low bid of $74 per ton, which represents a 17% decrease from the previous season's pricing. On a 500-ton order of salt, the low bid pricing would provide a cost savings of over $7,500 for the upcoming season. Staff recommends approval of the resolution, accepting the road cell bill, and will stand for any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 20-080.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, any public comment? Seeing none, council comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Neimeyer?
Aye.
Resolution 20-080 is approved. Now I'll ask city manager to speak to the city general employee contract.
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, in 2019, the city and unions agreed to a 2020 and 2021 agreement covering both regular employees and law enforcement employees. The, rather than have an automatic increase in wages every year, the city and unions both agreed annually to wage openers being the only item for opening. The city's greatest revenue source is our sales tax, and therefore annually, the city needs to project out salary increases with potential revenues to ensure a neutral impact for the foreseeable future. This year, COVID has made sales tax very volatile, especially when projecting out the future. Therefore, the city and unions have both agreed to a one-time salary increase and a new pay plan implementation. Any salary expenses are projected in offset with an equal increase in sales tax realization going into 2020, so 2021. Basically, whatever we end in 2020 will help assist us in determining what we're going to do for 2021 with salary increases. This creates a sustainable and a sustainable financial future. At the beginning of COVID, the city has set a ton of budget assuming the loss of 8% in sales tax and other revenues that impact the general fund. The city values employees and appreciates their understanding as we try to navigate the COVID impact and the impact to our organization, as well as our community. The proposed salary impact is outlined in the pack, and staff would be happy to answer any questions council might have of the recommendation.
Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, motion and a second. Any public comment on the city general employee contract? Close the public comment, council comments or questions? Councilman Brink?
Yeah, and maybe this is just my copy or how it came through. But I couldn't see in this agenda item and the next one, the difference between the clean and the marked contracts. Was there, could you point me to the sections that were specifically changed? Was it just that addition of Section 65 and the wages?
No, we did have to adjust just a few minor sections because it did relate back to the wage plan. So specifically, you'll find in each, within the police union and the regular employee union, there's, the sections are the same and it's called the salary section, but they're numbered differently based on all the items within each union agreement. So specifically, you'll see in the salary section, all those items called out and then how it impacts the salary adjustment and wage plan based on the sales tax increase. But there are some minor changes in there that relates back to the pay plan language.
Does anybody else, just out of curiosity, did you see red lines, or is it just my iPad? They didn't, okay, okay.
This is Holly, I also was not able to see the marked versions.
Mayor and council members, we can certainly send that out after the fact. It appears there must have been some sort of glitch. We can certainly send that to you after the council meeting via email.
Councilman Wendell?
Thank you, Mayor Corbett. I had a question for Paul about the use of federal dollars. Obviously, I know we have had some challenge in the federal dollars that are in the state of South Dakota, but have not yet been allocated to local governments. And we certainly have a list of items we could, could put those federal dollars to good use for. I also know that it would not be wise to apply what we assume are one-time federal dollars to staff salary, but as we look at the potential of one-time payouts or certain one-time appropriations, if federal dollars became available, would we be able to apply them to something like a one-time payout in this structure?
We'd have to ask permission for that. The only problem with doing that for next year is all funds have to be spent by the end of this year. And so that would be the hindrance, unless there's a new bill or funding that came out, we could certainly ask that. The state, at least First District, has been helpful in explaining what we can and cannot do. So that is something we can ask. I know other state and local agencies have allocated additional funds for those people that are on the front lines, which is respectable and understandable. But every agency plays by, not plays, but is governed by a different set of rules to an extent. So it's something we could certainly ask for this year. And I believe I've asked our CFO to ask that question of the First District. But for next year, we could utilize funds.
Any other questions? Okay, please call a roll.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Neimeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Is, general city employee contracts approved, next?
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, this is the exact same language within the police union agreement. So everything applies here as I just noted previously. Be more than happy to answer any questions you might have. And as with this one, after the meeting, Bonnie and I can make sure that you guys have a red line copy as well as a clean copy, if it didn't come through in the packet.
Entertain a motion to approve contract?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, council comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Neimeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Okay, police contract, union contract is approved. Next, I'd call in the city engineer, there she is, already up there. City engineer to speak to Resolution 20-81.
Okay, thank you. This item is action on Resolution 20-081, Resolution authorizing the execution of a real estate acquisition agreement. And the city of Brookings staff has been working with the property owners, Mike and Kathy McClemmons, related to their property along the 15th Street South and 7th Avenue South project. They've agreed to convey approximately 3.48 acres of land to the city as described in the agreement in your packet, and there's an exhibit that goes along with that. In exchange for that property, the city is agreeing to pay for plating costs, waiving the assessments for the property adjacent to that parcel, and then paying for surveying and engineering costs to design the construction of an earthen channel from 15th Street South down to the north entrance of the McClemmons addition detention pond. And the resolution will authorize the real estate sale agreement between the city of Brookings and Mike and Kathy McClemmons to transfer that land. And staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion to approve Resolution 20-81.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, second, thank you. Any public comment? Seeing none, close the public comment, council comments or questions? Councilmember Bacon?
I just want to thank Jackie and her team for all the work they've done on this. For those of you who don't remember, this has been part of a long-term project, and our goal is on the south side of the one section of land. We hope to be building an affordable housing, workforce housing complex. So I'm very excited, and thank you for getting it done.
Okay, please call a roll.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Neimeyer?
Aye.
Tilton Byrne?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Resolution 20-81 is approved. Now, under first readings, we do allow public comment on a first reading. However, there's no vote taken at this time, so I'd call on the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, whenever a Thank you, Mayor. City council members, whenever a position becomes vacant, departments are challenged with determining the best operational use of any positions that are open to meet the goals of the city. I'm recommending the restructuring of many departments to develop a public works department. Um, Jake or Bonnie, if you can progress it. This here is our current organizational chart, and as you can see, um, approximately 15 departments, um, divisions or direct reports report directly to the city manager. I'm restructuring, uh, recommending restructuring to a public works department to allow for more manageable span of leadership desired for efficient and effective services of the city. Uh, the public works department would have one director. Uh, the reorganization would combine three departments into one with three divisions. The move reduces the number of departments into 11, and over time with transition, the directors' positions would become managers. Uh, this transition would create savings, and the transition utilizes vacant, two vacant positions. Therefore, we wouldn't be adding any new FDEs, full-time equivalents, or employees to the organization. No additional sales tax or property tax would be needed, uh, and there would be no impact to the general fund. Any additional funds needed to augment the salary of the public works director would come from the savings of changing that street, um, director to a manager as well as solid waste who this position would oversee. Uh, the new department would contain the functions of engineering, stormwater, airport, snow removal, mosquito control, street maintenance, fleet landfill and refuge collections. More importantly, the reorganization under a public works director would create a more cohesive structure for operations and infrastructure investment. Uh, the combination of departments allows for greater collaboration between divisions that naturally share resources, communication and planning as well. Existing department heads have provided exceptional services and will continue to be the cornerstone, cornerstone progressing this plan forward and next success. Um, can you hit the, one more slide, please? Um, the detail of the, of the ideal candidate was included within the packet, uh, for a public works director. Uh, the American Public Works Association, International City Manager Association, 10 communities across the state of South Dakota, and six peer college towns were all engaged to create the ideal public work structure and candidate for what I believe would be best for Brookings organization. The reorganization has potentially add greater efficiencies within our organization. And within the action that's before you tonight, I also called out creating a community development department. As in the past, we couldn't find an ordinance that curated that department as well. So you'll see that department called out, as well as the divisions under the current city, or the chief financial officer. Uh, we wanted to make sure that the current structure and operations are truly called out since we're addressing this, uh, department at the same time. So with that, be more than happy to answer any questions council might have of this, this request.
Okay, seeing none, we'll have a second reading on, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I actually, thank you for the, for the opportunity. I, I have a number of questions related to this, and I think it's incumbent upon this body as a whole, if we're looking at permanently restructuring the, uh, department structure within the city, I think it's incumbent upon us to do our research and to have ample opportunity to get public input, to get, um, maybe some research, maybe some better understanding. In short, I have a laundry list of questions, um, that I would like to know answers to before I be prepared to vote yes. And I just think that maybe, um, other members of the public would be interested in, in weighing in on this too. And I wonder if there would be a second, uh, here if I were to make a motion to refer this item to an upcoming study session for us to have those public discussions that I think should happen before we make this change. So I would make that motion.
I'll second.
And I would second that. Um, I also have a couple of questions, and some might be able to be answered tonight, but regardless, I do, I would agree that, um, having this be an item on a study session so we can think strategically and long-term about the restructuring of some of our departments would be beneficial for, um, both the members of the council and also the public.
Yeah, we can definitely put this on next week's work session. Uh, we have one already programmed in for next week. Uh, all the materials are already here, so be more than happy to, to bring that forward. Would appreciate any advance, uh, questions that you might have so we can provide the research available for, uh, any council members to have those questions.
I haven't looked at, um, or I'm not sure what else on the session for next week, but how, how much time do you anticipate us having for this discussion? I think we'd like to.
As long as you need. I believe we have the room all night if, if necessary.
Okay, what I was getting at is, is it a full agenda already? Do we, do we think we have appetite and will, considering that there'll be a, a meeting that's following that to, to get through this? Um, so I'm looking for my fellow counselors if we think we're okay for time to put it on next week's, okay.
So are you thinking that maybe another su- study session, not just next week, but?
I just want to make sure it's not a, a five-minute, you know, little, little blip. Uh, I want to make sure that we have enough time to discuss and let the public weigh in.
Um, with next week's work session, well, first of all, you have the meeting tonight. You'd have the work session next week, uh, for council's discussion, and then you'd have another second reading of this ordinance, um, a week later. So that'd give you, um, at least three meetings for council discussion and two meetings for public discussion.
Um, I think if I'm hearing, um, Leah's concern correctly, it is one that I have as well, and that's, there have been times in the past where, um, our work sessions have, uh, been a little bit limited in, in length, um, just because we do have a meeting that follows the work session as well. Um, and so it kind of, uh, makes it difficult to fully dive into a topic. Um, aside from, um, the, the, um, ordinances around our, our COVID regulations, is there anything else currently on that agenda? And I would note, I do think our discussion around the COVID regulations alone could, um, take a, a good length of time, and I don't, I don't want to short either that discussion or the discussion about, um, the restructuring of some of these departments. I, I want to make sure we give both of them, um, the adequate attention that they need. And so, um, I, I know that in the past, we've kind of been limited to 45 minutes or, or less, um, for some of our work sessions. So would that be the case for the, the one next week?
Um, well, it, it's fully up to council. We can make it, uh, the work session as long as you would like. Uh, I know we did plan on having a regular meeting afterwards, so we could make the work session an extra, or an hour and a half if, if necessary to add for further discussion, to give you guys plenty of time to discuss this. If you think the public works director position will take a half hour or maybe an hour, um, maybe let us start tonight, and we can add that to the time. The only other item that we did have was the Engage Brookings app. Uh, we wanted to make sure that the public is fully aware of that, but that shouldn't take more than five minutes to present. Uh, once again, it's a great tool. I just want to, once again, hit Engage Brookings, download it if you can. Uh, but other than that, that's the only two items we had on the work session.
Well, my recommendation is let's go ahead and plan on having that conversation. If we don't feel comfortable that we have had the full discussion, then we can always table it, you know, to another scheduled meeting. But I'd say we should start the conversation regardless.
Why don't you get your questions to the city manager? Make sure he's got time to, he and the staff have time to get that ready. And if they don't, well, then, as council member, um, Bacon said, we'll look at another time, or we'll figure something out. But you're right, it is important.
It is, and, and I think just to, to that point, um, what I'd be interested in is a specific financial projection with the salary ranges projected out 10 years into the future with the current structure and then the proposed future structure and what that would look like based on the assumptions that we're using to do the modeling, uh, today. And then I'd like clarity in the point that you said, um, this would not be an increase of a full-time employee. I'm not sure how, how it wouldn't be, because wouldn't we still have to refill a streets manager position?
Correct, but we currently have two positions open. And so what we're going to do is take the salaries of, of at least one position, and then the decrease of the manager position to add to the public works department position. Uh, and then we'd augment that with any, um, salary needed from the, uh, solid waste. Then you also have future savings when, uh, the manager of the engineering, or the department head of the engineering or solid waste, um, retire, then you have additional future savings as well. I don't know when that would be. Uh, that'd be up to the individuals when they decide to retire.
For sure. I think you, you'd have to be showing us what assumptions you're making there, but I'm still not getting that. If we have, um, an engineering and a streets and a solid waste departments today, and we would still have managers in those roles, the public works person would be an addition on top of those people. It would, it, to me, it does seem like a plus-one FDE.
Sure, sure. And, and so what we have right now, and, and we can explain this in further detail in the work session. Uh, but what we have right now is an office manager. We also have a streets department head. And so what we'd do is add a, a, a streets manager, um, have savings there. We'd have a, a office manager have savings there, and then we'd need some additional saving, or some additional funds from, uh, solid waste to augment whatever future, whatever salary increases we'd need from public works.
So in a sense, we just wouldn't have an office manager in that position?
Correct, full-time office manager.
Yep, that was the part I was missing there. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'd be interested if, if it's possible and appropriate, any, um, any statements or input from existing staff would be helpful to hear from council to, to see if they support that.
Actually, if Jackie felt comfortable coming forward, she could talk about it. I've engaged both Jackie and Todd in this, uh, uh, transition, and, um, uh, Jackie, uh, pardon, sorry, all my glasses on.
Don't put her on the spot.
Would mind coming forward and maybe, uh, talking a little bit about that, um, about that transition? And your thoughts, if you feel comfortable? That tonight would be fine. Sorry not to put you on the spot.
And if I may just interject, if, if you'd prefer to kind of think it over and, and provide feedback at the, the work session, I think that would be acceptable too. I'd, I, I do think that this is a very important topic, and so I'd rather have a, a well-thought response than, than putting someone on the spot tonight.
Thank you. That would be my preference. Okay. No problem.
But just so council does know, I have engaged, um, Jackie as well as Todd a number of weeks ago about this transition and about this idea. In fact, I've been talking about a public works type of, uh, um, di- department and the efficiencies that, that could provide over the past couple of years, that, that would be something that I'd like to work towards, but not until the time is appropriate. Now is, is an opportunity, uh, to do so. Um, but if council isn't desire, does not desire this after the work session, then maybe at some time else in the future. Um, but there are a lot of efficiencies and opportunities that can be had by this type of structure.
Sure, and I, I mean, I had, have some more specific questions we could get into next time, but I was also just interested in, um, understanding, community development and how, why that department would be proposed to remain separate from, from public works, or how you would explain the difference in that work versus engineering and, and public works.
Yeah, and, and so the reason why I'd recommend it being separated, once again, is if you look at the span of control, especially for managers, you start getting way too many departments and divisions under it. Also, at the same time, and it's just my own personal philosophy, a lot of the, uh, communities and organizations I've worked in have often had a separate community development and public work structure. And that's because community development really de- deals with, uh, building code, creating a sense of community neighborhoods where you have your public works, uh, with three engineering developing streets and sidewalks and things of that nature. And really, you need both really, um, play well against each other, not against each other, but with each other, um, in building a community. And, and, because if you have too much, uh, weighted towards engineering, you might not be considering the impact to a neighborhood. And, and so you have to play both of those, and, and it's good to have them separated. That's my own personal philosophy, but we could add more to that discussion next week.
Um, this is Holly, and just a, a little bit of clarity kind of in, in what I'm looking for. First, I, I would, I just want to say that I'm not, um, I'm not necessarily opposed to a pla- public works department. I want to make sure that, um, my, my desire to kind of dig into this further isn't reflected as, as an opposition to it. Uh, rather, I just want to make sure that if we are going to restructure, um, several of our departments, I just want to make sure we're being very mindful of it and that not only the council has a, a chance to fully digest what a restructure would look like and what it would mean and why we are doing it, but that the public has that opportunity as well. Um, I would also, um, just want to look kind of beyond just the public works department as well and, and that, that, um, restructuring into kind of looking at what the restructuring overall might be, because I think as, um, some folks maybe have noticed that, that the changes on the organizational chart between the current one and the proposed one, um, aren't isolated to that public works department. There are a couple of other, um, changes listed on there as well. And so I just want to make sure we're thinking kind of holistically about what the, um, restructure of several different departments could be. Um, I think, uh, some of the other changes we see is, um, under the CFO department. Um, and then something I've noticed on the proposed organizational chart is that some of the, the departments in, in the proposed version, um, are outlined not only by, uh, purple box, but by a pink box as well, and I'm not quite sure what that indicates as, um, in, in reference to the difference, um, between the, the current one. And so just a, a clearer picture of the strategic reasoning and, and, um, method behind why we might restructure some of these departments and, and what the pros and cons might be, and maybe even having some examples of other communities, um, that have their department structured in this way could be helpful, um, as we make our decision.
Yeah, and I'll just comment it, comment real quick, just in preparation for next week's meeting. Um, two things you'll notice in that diagram, and it's, it's always interesting how you call out an, an organization by, uh, that diagram. Thank you. Um, you'll notice the dotted lines, and for the public listening council already knows this, but the dotted line shows that the city attorney and city clerk are appointed by the city council. So we thought it was important to clarify that and point that out. Uh, the pink, uh, highlight, you'll notice the assistant city manager is in pink, and Jake, what he does, he's not over those departments, but he does provide them guidance. He meets with them. Uh, usually, once a week, he'll meet with one department to, um, provide them any information or guidance that they might need, uh, if I'm not available. Um, once again, having 15 direct reports makes it difficult to meet with them on, on a consistent basis. And our department heads deserve, uh, communication with, with their manager. And so if I'm not available, Jake's there to help provide some insights that they might need or, or request. But we can talk further about that next week as well.
Okay, so we'll have that next week, study session, and get your questions and thoughts from Paul, and he's available if you would want to speak to him.
Mr. Mayor, we need to have a vote. We have a motion on the floor.
Okay. Any further discussion? Thank you, Bonnie. Seeing none, please call a roll then.
What was the motion?
To put it on at a study session for next week.
Just wanted to make sure.
All right, Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Okay, now you know what we're going to do. All right, next. Public hearing and second reading. I wonder if you've got my director, Mike Struck.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the audience. Uh, ordinance 20-021 is an ordinance amendment to Chapter 51 of our subdivision regulations. It is a amendment to clean up some language to get more in line with our current practices. Um, in the marked copy, you should be able to see that, uh, we've changed the number of, uh, submittals from two to one. We've changed the scale to, uh, language on the scale as well as it's required to be, uh, submitted to the community development department instead of the planning department. That doesn't exist. The most significant change, though, is the, um, requirement for submitting it on the first day of the month for the following month's planning commission meeting. Um, with preliminary plats, it's one of the most important processes in the entire development, um, process. And, uh, the current requirement of submitting it on the 15th day of the month for the first Tuesday of the month's planning commission meeting doesn't allow staff and the development review team adequate time to real thoroughly vet those preliminary plats. And so we'd like a little bit additional time on that. Um, we did do a recent change earlier this summer where we made, uh, final planning and administrative, um, process whereby they submit it to staff. We go through the process, and then the city manager can sign the final plat. So we streamlined it on that end, but we feel we need more time to really ensure that, uh, we're getting, uh, uh, good quality design in, in our developments for the long-term benefit of our community. Uh, and then just on the second portion of the amendment, it's just requiring one copy of the Mylar. Um, that's the only copy that, uh, the register of deeds will accept, sign, and actually, uh, record. So there's no need to submit six paper copies. They just ended up in the recycle bin. And then we also want the, uh, surveyor to submit, uh, the electronic CAD file version so that we can simply just take their files, drop it into our system, and, uh, everything will align correctly. I'd stand for any questions you may have.
This time it opened public hearing. Anyone care to speak to ordinance 20-21? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve.
I just had a question quick, Mr. Mayor. Um, the, uh, the, i- is it right to say that the, the requirement for the CAD version of the file is something that's industry standard anyway? That's not going to have a burden, um, on anyone? I mean, they're, they're doing it that way anyway?
For the most part, uh, our local engineering firms are submitting it to, uh, Brookings Municipal Utilities anyways, and that's who our partner is in all of our plat map, and so they would continue to do that. Once in a while, we get a little bit of, um, kickback from out-of-town firms, but, I mean, it's something that, uh, they're, they're submitting all the line work. It just eliminates the need to, to duplicate work by reproducing it, drawing it- It just eliminates the need to duplicate work by reproducing it, drawing it in in the CAD version. So that's why we're simply requesting it.
Makes sense. I just wanted to make sure there's not a whole pocket of people that always submit without electronic for which that would be a problem. Okay.
Still need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion second. Now, public, public council comment or questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Corbett.
Aye.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Ordinance 20-21 is approved. Thanks, Mike. He's already gone. And there she is again. Go ahead, Jackie.
Hey, this item is a public hearing in action on resolution 20-082. And I will have to read the entire title here into the record. A resolution giving approval to certain storm drainage improvements, giving approval to the issuance and sale of an off-revenue bond, or sale of a revenue bond to finance directly or indirectly the improvements to the facilities, approving the form of the loan agreement and revenue bond, and pledging revenues and collateral to secure the payment of the revenue bond, and creating special funds and accounts for the administration of funds for operating of the system and retirement of the revenue bond. And this is for the State Avenue Watershed Improvement Project. And the city received approval for loan funding from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, the SRF program through the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources to finance this project. And the loan will be financed up to $850,000 with terms of 2.5% interest for 20 years. And then we will pay that back through the drainage fund from the collected drainage fees. And this resolution will give approval for the city of Brookings to utilize the SRF loan for the State Avenue Watershed Project involving drainage improvements in the Jefferson Avenue area. And staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Okay. Thank you. This time open public hearing. Anyone care to speak to this? Seeing unclosed public hearing, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion second. Any council comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Niemeyer.
Aye.
Tilton Byrne.
Aye.
Wendell.
Aye.
Bacon.
Aye.
Brink.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Corbett.
Aye. Resolution 20-82 is approved. Thank you, Jackie. Now it asks the city clerk to speak to resolution 20-83.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and audience. In front of us tonight is resolution 20-083. It is an application to transfer an on-sale liquor operating agreement from Old Market Eatery LLC, Jesse Lee owner at 424 Fifth Street, to Gons Productions Incorporated, doing business as Main Street Bub, Garner Hansen owner at 408 Main Street. A public hearing and action is required for alcohol licenses. The license would be effective upon South Dakota State Department of Revenue Final Action and license issuance, then subject to an annual renewal if you approve. All required documents have been submitted for this application of transfer.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant care to speak to this as we open public hearing? Care to speak to it?
How's it going, you guys? Came to see if you had any questions and if there's anything I can answer for you. Right off the bat, I think I've talked to most of you already and gone through everything. But other than that, it'd be great if I could get your approval.
Okay, just go ahead and stand by if there are questions that come up then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Anyone else care to speak to this? Please come up, introduce yourself and speak to it. Certainly can.
This looks a lot easier on TV than when you're in real life, doesn't it?
You want to change seats?
No, thank you. No, no thanks. My name is Kirk Semet. And I live at 1115 Indian Hills Road, Brookings, South Dakota. I went to school here in 1975. Haven't left. Worked at Daktronics for 30 years. Started my own real estate company, 2007. In my family, we have six SDSU graduates, wife, kids. Grew up in Brookings, longtime small business owner. My current company, SLH, and HME employ about 80 people. And our headquarters is in the old market building now renamed and rebranded to Fifth and Fifth. We're in the basement, so we don't get to see much light. Just wanted to ask, we missed the date when we were supposed to get the packet to the council members by 5 o'clock. And my wife sent out an email under her name, Lori Nicholson, and just wanted to know that y'all received that and had a chance to review that. We only had a couple of confirmation and it was a lot of detail in there, unfortunately. It's a very serious matter, what we got in front of us here. Very serious. There's two parts to it. One is the business dealings tied closely to legal proceedings. And I've asked my counsel, Tim Hogan, another local gentleman, been here a long time in life, to be involved with this from day one. This is a very difficult situation, not only for us, but for the council to decide what is the right thing to do, both from a business standpoint and potentially from a legal standpoint. It's a tough decision from your point. From my point, very simple, very clear, very clear. And let me explain why. I'm going to hit the highlights. Mr. Hogan's going to hit maybe some of the more legal aspects of the situation. You know, if you follow the track record of the Old Market Eatery liquor license, and if I don't call it the liquor operating agreement, I'll just call it liquor license, same thing. We understand it, read it too many times. You know, it's been at the Old Market Eatery since JL Thorpe bought the facility, the top part of the condo, and put the restaurant there. That was back in 2011. She was a council member and was issued a liquor license with the business. And for what it was worth, Van Fishback owned the lower part, which is condo. So it was a condo project and it continued to operate that as a condo to 2018 when we bought it. But back in 2013, JL sold the restaurant, Old Market Eatery, which included the license agreement. She purchased all the stuff in that restaurant, secured the license, and sold it to Jesse two years later for $200,000. I have a copy of the, of the purchase agreement. So there's value in that space. There's value in that liquor license. I think there's been some case here trying to decipher with, is there a value in it? I don't know. But we all know, even if the state, the city does not put a value on it, there's a value there. It's a tremendous value. And when you sell that space and you sell that license, that comes with that space. That restaurant has operated with that liquor license in that same spot since 2011. Two years from JL, the last seven or eight from Jesse Lee. Back in 2018, I bought the property to move our headquarters from JL and from Van Fishback. We eliminated the condos. Very confusing. I think even the city was happy to see us eliminate the condos for a lot of reasons. Fire safety, and frankly, as JL would note, and we have a tenant here as well, Isaiah Krebier with Champion. The building was, needed some, some help financially. And so we went in there and did that. We bought the building, it's on public record, $490,000. We put another $550,000 into that building. You ask any tenant, you ask any person who stepped on that grounds in that building to see the improvements. I mean, that's a landmark here. Fishbacks, that's where they started, basically. So I, I was honored. I could buy it, renovate it. Was honored for the tenants, honored for the people in the community to be proud of that space. We've taken great care of it. Part of that discussion and renovation was we, Fifth and Fifth, put in $110,000 with improvements into Old Market. Kitchen, ovens, redid the whole downstairs for him. In addition to that, we combined both of those leases, because when you have a condo association, you have two owners. So Jesse had a long-term lease upstairs and he had a 30-day lease downstairs. I could have canceled that 30-day lease on 30 days' notice. I had that option. Could have done it. Should have done it. I didn't. We worked nine months to get a lease, signed lease, all the improvements, all of my money, our money, to do that renovation. $110,000. Worked with Eric Rasmussen, just working that contract, lease, difficult, very difficult. At the end, we write a sign, personal guarantee was in there, Jesse pulled the personal guarantee out of it. The reason being, you don't have a personal guarantee, you have nothing. But I'm thinking, wow, you know, he's been there seven years, liquor license is there, long-term tenant. One of the main reasons we bought the building, he was 40% of the lease revenue, that's how it appraised. Lots of value of having that restaurant there. Believe me, my tenants have let me know. Finally got the lease signed, March of 2020, March of 2020. Well, guess what hit? COVID. I understand that. I mean, cities made some tremendously tough decisions. And they've cost people money, but for what? For the health. I mean, that's fundamentally the decisions you're making. Very difficult. You're saving lives. I'm not going to get in that debate. Plenty of people have had that. So appreciate the fact that the city shut everybody down, Old Market included. Jesse shut down. All of us shut down. You know what? Everybody else tried to make a go of it. Everybody. Everybody. Every restaurant, I'm not aware of any other restaurant who did not open during COVID to even try to do takeout or carry. Old Market didn't. They didn't. Didn't even try. You know what we did? In addition to putting all this money into it, not having a personal guarantee, we deferred his lease payments. Three months, 50% lease payment deferral. No interest to pay us back. In the lease, he had a security deposit due, $4,106, trying to help Jesse. We deferred that. No interest, 12 months. August comes around, lease is in pack, lease is signed, seven years, two five-year renewals. Everything's buttoned up. We're good. We're golden. Jesse says, plan it open. Everybody asked, my tenants asked me, talked to him, yeah, plan it open, plan it open. Never opens. The day he was supposed to start paying the full lease payments with the deferred, no check. No check. You know it's coming. Lease is tight, it's written well. Jesse defaults, five days. I mean, we have all of our attorneys, Eric Rasmussen, Tim Hogan, doing the right legal proceedings. Not me. It's not my staff. It's our attorneys. We contacted Steve Breitman right away when it was default. I knew it was going to happen here. I knew what was going to happen. He was going to try to move that asset, liquor license, out of the LLC. I contacted Steve immediately. Steve contacted Paul. I emailed Paul. We met with Steve, we met with Bonnie, trying to save that liquor license from being transferred. Because we knew what was going on. There's value there. If you're in business, LLC, no personal guarantee, he'll collapse it, he'll file bankruptcy. He owes us $23,000 right now, right now. That grows at $6,000 a month. His lease is valued at $400,000. So what's it up to me? Walk out the door. Not only does he walk out the door, within five days, he files a transfer of the license. Really? We gave him plenty of opportunities. Jesse negotiated, let's figure this out. How do we, how can we get payment from you? Nothing. Legal matters, all presented, final payment due. Five days. Matter of fact, when we met with Steve and Bonnie, the 16th of September, he had already filed the transfer. Was it their obligation or duty to tell us? No, but they knew. That asset was gone. And so we're fighting hard to keep that, that liquor license in that location where it's been, so we can go find a potential another tenant. I don't even care if you give it to me, but don't give it to him. Don't let it be transferred to him for him to monetize when he owes me money. He owes me $23,000 right now, $6,000 a month till I find another tenant. I can't go out and get another restaurant. Can't even talk to him, because they're going to ask me, where's your liquor license? I don't have one. Transferred. Now you do things for the city, for the sake of the city, the health, costs money, tough decisions. What do I do? What do I do? Assigned seven-year lease, seven years, $400,000 defaulted, no personal guarantee. The only asset I have is to not allow him to transfer that liquor license. If you'd let him transfer it, that asset's gone. That die was gone. I'll sue him. By the way, lawsuit was filed today against Old Market and Jesse Lee. Tim can speak to that. But if that asset is gone, and you can stop it, you can stop it. Nothing else, put it on hold. Let us fight through this. If Jeff comes up with a plan that pays me off, he can have my, he can have the license, he can do whatever he wants to. Guarantee you, he's not giving it to Garner for free. Guarantee you. So you allow him to monetize that and me to suffer after all I've done for him and the building through COVID. That's not right. That's not even fair. So I appeal to you, as a business person, small business owner, don't let this happen. Don't let this happen. The city can do it. The city has the rights without cause to pull that license. You have that right. I'm giving you a ton of cause. I'm not even saying, don't pull it from him. Just don't transfer it. Let us figure it out. Let him come up with a payment plan and I'm like, okay, that license is yours. And we'll tell you when it's done. Because he'll want to transfer, he'll want to monetize it. But don't take that right away from me, please. Please don't do that. It's not fair if you allow that to happen. Tim, I don't know if you can add anything or want to? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and council, I will not go into any of the details, I think Mr. Semet.
Would you just introduce yourself in case anybody?
Uh, my name is Tim Hogan. I'm an attorney for Fifth and Fifth LLC, the owner of the building that Old Market is contained in. I'm not going to go into any details since Mr. Semet sent a letter and went into some detail here about the past history. Obviously, Fifth and Fifth has a significant investment into the building. They purchased this with an existing restaurant and bar. They made these significant improvements. They've entered into a seven-year lease. And the lease has been defaulted on. Right now, the remaining 84 months would be over $380,000 additional. Landlord traditionally has a duty to mitigate. This is a requirement under this lease that he has to. This is a requirement under this lease, that he has to attempt to find a new tenant to move into the lease premises. Fifth and Fifth, over the past month, has made efforts to try to find a tenant. The ones they have spoken with, the first question is always, does this include the liquor operating agreement? Without the operating agreement, Fifth and Fifth has found that it's nearly impossible to find a tenant for the Old Market space. We have now brought a lawsuit against Old Market Eatery LLC for breach of the commercial lease. This was served on the registered agent of Old Market Eatery LLC today. Fifth and Fifth does not have a security interest in the operating agreement. We admit that. But, and therefore, we're not able to stop the city tonight from transferring this license. But after a lawsuit and a judgment is obtained on this breach of contract, we would be in a position to attach to the property rights of Old Market Eatery LLC and to attach all of their property. What we're asking the city to do tonight is just simply not approve the transfer. To determine that the license is an important part of the Fifth and Fifth building, and that for the landlord to mitigate its damages as required under the lease, it's critical that the liquor operating agreement is needed. We're asking the city council, therefore, to deny or move to a study session in the future, the operating agreement. We're also asking the court in the future to terminate the operating agreement of Old Market Eatery LLC. I would point the court to laws under liquor licensing in South Dakota. SDCL 35-26.3 requires the licensee to be the owner or actual leasing of the premises. Old Market shut down their business March 27th. On August 15th, they defaulted on the lease. On August 27th, they were served a notice to quit and vacate. And on September 11th, they fully vacated the premises. They failed to make any payments under this lease, and they remain in default, and they are not in possession of this property. This authorizes the city today to terminate the operating agreement with Old Market Eatery, as they're not the owner of this building and they're not in possession of the premises. In the alternative, we simply ask the court to deny the transfer of the liquor operating agreement, so that Fifth and Fifth can proceed with the litigation against Old Market Eatery LLC, and to preserve the only real asset of this business. As Mr. Simmons said, don't reward a company that is part of an operating agreement with this city to transfer a license while leaving significant debts from the operation of a business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Anyone else here to speak to this?
Good evening. My name's Jesse Lee. Live at 917 Sixth Avenue. Kirk really knows how to talk. It's a gift he has. I don't, so I'm just going to stick to facts. One thing that Kirk forgot to mention is that, when the building was purchased, I was a partner in his company. It seemed like it was a pretty big thing to kind of leave out.
Tell that he's speaking right now, so-
Improvements were also started before there was actual approval from me, based on the fact that Kirk was actually trying to buy the restaurant at the time from me. But because of a lot of situations that were happening within the company that I was not comfortable with, we could not come to an agreement on selling the restaurant to him. The negotiations on the past rent, I'm unaware of that. I did receive a letter yesterday asking me for the first time what my plan was. And then another thing he said too is, the city did not shut me down. I chose to do it out of the safety for my employees and for the community. And also on that too, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. It's not your position to mediate between us. I don't even know why this is a situation. This is a pretty black-and-white transfer. There's rules for this, and we follow them all, and that's why we're here. And from what I understand, staff did recommend approval. The other thing too, that's very, very important to understand, is that I don't know how we are going to be able to operate our business in the current environment at Fifth and Fifth LLC. But that is something, when we go to court, that we will let them decide. I think it's forgot too, that we're in the middle of a pandemic. It affects different people differently, and the way that it affected us, we were just unable to reopen. And then as for that 30-day, he could have canceled my lease at the end. I had a tremendous amount because I worked for Kirk. I can show you stubs and proof of that, I guess, if he's going to say he didn't, I didn't. I would have never put myself in a situation to have a 30-day lease unless I worked with someone that I felt like I could trust. And, I mean, he said it, I know he was thinking it the whole time, which was part of the reason that we delayed, sorry, signing the lease so much. There were so many dishonest things going on at the time. I felt very uncomfortable being attached at the building at the time, and I just wanted my time to make sure that all my ducks were in a row, I guess. I did offer to make an agreement with them. I said I have assets of the business that I don't want. It was denied, and I was told multiple times that they had no plans to use the space as an establishment. I asked, I asked, and I was told every time that that was not true. If I was told the truth, I would have made a good faith effort to come to an agreement. I don't like standing here. I love the Old Market. My wife loved it. We hope to provide another establishment to the Brookings community soon. But given the certain circumstances where we are at, it just was not going to be possible. I am thankful that Garner's given me the opportunity to help him develop another establishment. As you know, I have a pretty long history of developing establishments in this town, and every one of them is still in business. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to speak to this topic? Yeah, close the public comment. Council, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council, comments or questions? Anything maybe for the city attorney or city clerk? Councilmember Bacon?
I just want to clarify, as I understand it, what we are voting on tonight is simply the liquor agreement transferred from, which I don't see it listed specifically in here, the name of who has it now, but that it's going to Gons Productions. And so all of this background is irrelevant to us. We're not part of any business or legal obligations at all. Our only job is to process the application and determine that the applicant is in good standing to receive that. And as I understand it, Bonnie, you have worked through all the application and all the paperwork with Garner, and everything's in order?
That's correct. Councilmember Bacon, the application that we have in front of us, which would make this resolution and operating agreement transfer complete, Garner and Jesse Lee have met all of the requirements set forth by state law and city council policy on liquor operating agreements.
So as I see it, we need to spend no more time on this. It's simply a matter of, if we agree, then we should approve this liquor license.
Okay. Anyone else here to speak? Councilman Collins?
I think it's, to me, it sounds a lot like a big civil case between you two. I don't think it should involve the city as far as the money goes. I don't think the city can say, Jesse has to pay back this so much money, and then you'll release the license or whatnot. But I think it's a civil matter between you two, and I would vote to say yes to the transfer.
Okay. Councilman Niemeyer or Tilton Burn? Any comments?
Oh, I had my question that you earlier.
No comment from me at this time.
Okay. Councilmember Brink, I don't limit you. Any other questions, council? Council, okay, city attorney?
Just a couple of comments. Now, this is a, this would be a public hearing, so you would be following the guidelines established by state statute 35-2-1.2. And, of course, the issue is before you because there's been a request to transfer. And so that's why the matter is on the agenda. But the council does have duties in terms of making this decision. And you've held a, you've held a public hearing, hearing from both sides, the proponents, the opponents, to the issue. So you've conducted the public hearing. I just want to make sure that, you know, the council is clear as to the range of choices that you have. And our guidance for decision-making on a transfer would be guided by that statute that I cited. And basically, fundamentally, you're deciding whether the applicant is suitable to hold the license. In other words, the proposed transferee, Gons Productions, and whether the proposed location is suitable. So that's the starting point for a motion to approve would be considering those two factors. That doesn't tell you too much in terms of detail on what you can think about, having heard the proposal, having heard the facts that have been submitted. But we look at the longstanding Randall versus Yankton case, which kind of provides the factors that the city council can consider when looking at a transfer or a new application, which is, this is similar to an application by a new applicant. And I'll just quote a paragraph. And the reason I'm providing this background is just so that the council has clearly in the record considered all of the considerations that would be appropriate to make a decision such as this. Because it obviously is a significant decision for all the parties that have testified here today. So the Yankton case provides, it appears to us that the factors that may be properly considered in the exercise of legal discretion would be the type of business which the applicant proposes to operate. And that would be the transferee at the new location. The manner in which the business is operated. The extent to which minors frequent or are employed in such business. The adequacy of police facilities to properly police the proposed location, as well as other factors. And the other factors since 1965 have really not been articulated in great detail. However, there is some guidance in another case, which would indicate that the local governing body has a legitimate interest in managing the alcoholic beverage licensing in its jurisdiction to assess whether an alcohol sales location is suitable. And so when we talk about the council's discretion, I think that you can supply the factors that you think are important with respect to the proposed location. The proposed applicant would be a more finite or narrow consideration as to whether they have suitable character and can legally qualify to hold the license. But this is primarily, you know, an issue of whether or not the proposed location is suitable. And I think whether the proposed location is suitable would include a consideration of whether that location is, well, you can supply what you think is the analysis as to whether the proposed location is suitable. In other words, comparing it to the current location or other choices for locations that you have in mind as an alternative. And so that's just a, it's only a suggestion. It's really up to the council to decide what suitability means with respect to location. So that's a comprehensive overview of the law that the council is required to consider before they vote on a proposed transfer.
Councilman Wendell? Go ahead, Councilman Wendell.
I had a follow-up question for the city attorney. We had requested some context around precedent set in the state of South Dakota and our existing processes and precedent in the city of Brookings, and I appreciate you providing that to us. It seemed that what might be left up to interpretation was that other factors language in the 1965 case. And I know one of the requests we had made is to give us some sense of precedent that has been set in the city of Brookings, whether or not we have ever linked anything like unfulfilled terms or unpaid rent to a decision on a renewal or a transfer of existing license. It didn't appear to me as though that precedent had been set in our community or that that was something that we had necessi, a comparable situation had existed in Brookings that might provide a precedent for us. And so it would seem that if we were to evaluate unpaid rent or unfulfilled terms this evening, it might be a precedent-setting type of activity that I was uncomfortable with. And so I do appreciate the context you provided and the thoughtfulness. I know my fellow counselors put into this case, which is clearly a difficult one. But I don't know that it is safe for us necessarily to set new precedent in our decision-making process this evening. And so I would tend to support the transfer for those reasons.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak to this? Councilmember Bacon?
I just remembered that when Mr. Simmons was speaking, you indicated an interest yourself in owning that liquor license. Am I correct? I can't. Well, I'd rather see, have a visual.
We need to have you there so it's recorded and everything.
No problem.
Yes. We would want the opportunity to market that license to a new tenant.
So you want to market it to a new tenant? You have not made an application yourself for that license?
At this point, no.
And what are, do we have a requirement of posting a license as available for others to apply for?
It's within the city's discretion to approve transfers, to approve issuance of any operating agreements under South Dakota law and our Brookings local option.
Okay, so we are not out of line if we choose to pass this, approve this tonight?
Nope. I think, I guess I've outlined the discretion. I don't want to be too presumptuous about what some of the guidelines provide. Maybe I have been, but I intended to just provide some examples of the range of decision-making that you have in applying the discretion as to whether or not a transfer should be approved or not.
Thank you. That was all my question.
Council, any other questions? You can go ahead and go sit back. Okay. Bonnie, please call roll.
Tilton Burn?
Aye.
Wendell?
Aye.
Bacon?
Aye.
Brink?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Niemeyer?
Aye.
Okay, resolution 20-83 is approved. Now turned over to the city manager for Covid-19 update.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. The following information was provided by the state of South Dakota Department of Health, professionals from SDSU Hospital and other clinics here locally. Brookings currently has 210 positive cases, which is a new record. At the last report a few weeks ago, Brookings had 118 active cases. Last week, and last weekend, or this last weekend and today, Brookings realized a large increase in cases, and details are not yet known what might be some of the implications or causes of those increases. Deaths due to Covid in Brookings still remains at two. There have been 1,025 positive cases total. Approximately 813 cases have recovered. 5,464 tests have occurred in Brookings County. South Dakota test positive rate is 29%, and Brookings is now 34%. Brookings County is still under substantial spread. As a state of South Dakota, we have 6,044 active cases. There are 302 hospitalizations, which is also a new record. There are 302 hospitalizations, which is also a new record. This last week, there are 40 deaths across the state. In the previous week, there were 30. The city is still in phase three, which opens businesses to 50% occupancy while requiring employees to wear masks. The mask, and that's for certain businesses. The mask mandate is for all indoor businesses in public places. It's still in effect until early November. And of course, as mentioned earlier, at next week's work session, city council will discuss that ordinance and any details that they would like to make. And then of course, the first meeting will take place shortly after next week's work session that same night. Guidelines for moving between phases have all been triggered with the exception of hospitalizations. The threshold report is located on our website for those that would like to review it. And Brookings has one new hospitalization. Anecdotally, we've been told surrounding communities are seeing a large increase, increases in hospitalizations. However, Brookings hospitalizations still remain low. Masks are now available to the public and businesses through the city. And to find out how to obtain masks in marketing materials, residents can stop off at the city county building at the administration suite or go to our COVID webpage at citoyofbrookings.org. Finally, we are, we have been made aware that Hy-Vee is now testing for COVID on certain days of the week. Our marketing team, as well as partners, will work collaboratively to market those efforts here shortly via social media and in the media. Finally, we encourage all to continue to do their part. Social distance, wear masks, and practice good hygiene. And that's the report for this week's COVID.
Any questions? Okay, looking ahead, next week, as you know, discussed, we're going to have a discussion on Public Works Department at a study session. COVID ordinance 20-10, ending it or not? Get any questions you have, please, to the city manager so we make sure everything's, he's got all answers. And then we'll have a regular meeting at 6 o'clock or when we're done with the study session. Then on the 27th, our next meeting, and we'll have an update on the Brookings marketplace development and the FO Butler Award presentation with Diane Nagy by the Human Rights Commission. It's going to be a great night. Anything else in the future that you haven't mentioned?
Can I ask for some clarification about next week? Do we have confirmation that someone from the Brookings Health System will be joining us for next week's study session?
I could certainly ask that and write that in advance, who will be presenting?
I think it would be really helpful. One point of contention I continue to hear in the community is confusion around staff capacity and bed capacity, but not just in Sioux Falls, not statewide, but specific to Brookings. And then how we're handling capacity regionally between Brookings and the health systems in Sioux Falls. And I think there's a lot of confusion. Some new data was released through the Department of Health today that I think created some additional confusion and some clarity, but some confusion. And I just think it would be really helpful to hear from our local health system in a conversation next week.
I like that idea too. I just, I think it'll be helpful for us from a discussion standpoint if we hear presentations from those officials. But then we have, you know, a discussion that is just amongst the council as we navigate what we want to do. And I think given that and the timing of the meetings, I would certainly support us doing a 5:00 study session and then setting the meeting time for 6:30 just to be sure that we're safe and then we can advertise a time if you guys are okay with that.
I don't, we don't need a motion on that, do we Bonnie? I mean, we're all in agreement. We want to make sure we have plenty of time. Okay, nothing else, council? Entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second.
Second.
We did have a second. There we go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. We're adjourned.